You got this.
I believe that time has come to call this meeting to order. Want to welcome our guest. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve again.
I get a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Oppose and. Open forum, Larry.
I have a question tonight. The only is, well, my question is how the repair of the track is going, particularly to the field events since the shot put was particularly messed up from the football. Track or football fielding. They, so I can answer that.
We have plans to continue working on that. We shut that long jump pit. It just hasn't been able to get a good time to finish filling it in. And as far as the shot put area, we might have discussed for a while.
Okay, because that was a problem. Throwing a pillow.
Doesn't work out too well.
So that's that thing.
Okay. Do you want to add to that?
Overlay track, that'll be part of our discussion this evening, but shot put, yeah, we have a plan to attack that as soon as it gets dry enough. We need to finish up our long jump pits and fill those with sand. The only thing that really keeping us from doing that moving on, it's just been sloppy. They are draining really well. And so we're looking pretty good there. We just need to finish that up and have the right weather to level it up.
All right. Get a motion to approve a consent agenda.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
I get a second. On favor, raise your hand, raise your hand, oppose. All right, next approval of open session meetings in the last minute. Can I get a motion to approve the regular open session minutes for the last meeting? Second, any further discussion and corrections? All in favor, raise your hand. Oppose the same. Approval and transfer payment of bills. Anybody have any questions on approval and transfer payment of bills? It's a long list, but nothing odd. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the transfer and payment of bills? I get a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Carrie. Report, elementary.
Well, good evening. First, I would say I understand it is Board of Appreciation Month, and so Lynn Elementary decided to recognize you all with our coveted Way to Go Wildcats. So I hope that you saw that this evening, and then we wanted to just say thank you to you for your service to students and staff and the community. We just, we appreciate your service to us. And so I was hoping maybe we could take a picture of you with your. I was telling Mr. James about what we were doing, and he said, I think you should ask them to walk out there and take it in the traditional. I think so. So if you don't mind, would you walk out there? We can take the picture in front of the local spot? With your whole, with your certificate. And then the kids tomorrow will say, why is there spray? Our part's spraying.
If any of you know any of their parents, if you could encourage them to comment on our Facebook page about how proud they are. That way we get the full effect.
That's right.
Should have looked through our posts and found a really interesting one with a lot of character where there's one kid who looks lost and another little kid who looks super happy. And then had them recreated in the order right to left, no matter what, that would have been fun.
All right, so there are enrollment kind of staying there similar to November anyway, or two seventy seven. Just commenting on January kind of being our mid-year data analysis month, where we really do a much deeper dive with our data this month. Collecting a lot and reading in particular, we will do our bench, we're doing our benchmarking right now. So we collect a lot of data, K five, we will dig pretty deep on our phonics and phonemic awareness studies and just really make sure that our kids have the interventions that they need. I kind of wanted to take, I always take a peek at what our evaluate data is looking like, and I noticed a little bit of a trend, so I kind of thought I'd point out to you. I would anticipate our DIBLs data, which really is looking at our foundational pieces, our phonics and so forth. I would anticipate that to be making a big change, but what I noticed when I looked at evaluate, which really is looking at our standards. I wouldn't, I don't know that that would change as quickly in our lower grades, but I noticed that our kindergarten had the highest score that they've had at mid-year in the last five years. And then our first grade looks like they were kind of setting a little bit of a trend. There were two years in a row at a higher score. So they're proficient already at mid-year as a grade level right now in kindergarten and first class. You know what, I'm going to go ahead and put that on there. That's, we are still in the process of writing our curriculum in ELA right now. We have, we do have it in place finally in, in math, and we are, it is in play in math, but we had a lot of work to do. We've been writing curriculum quite extensively, and so I was really pleased to see that. We've only had Hagerty and Saxon in place for two years. And last year, there was a lot of just, you know, your first year in something, you're really just finding your way through it and making some mistakes and getting some PD and figuring out what to do with it. And so this year is much more with fidelity, really our first deep implementation of that. So I was pleased with that and thought I would share that with you. That to me looks like some good data to celebrate. We really are working heavily too on our culture in the building and just making sure that we're remaining in a positive place with our staff and our students and and trying to also reach out to our community and making sure that we have a positive relationship with our community. And so we wanted to do a service project. Staff talked quite a bit about this in our, in our Wildcat team and decided to do this service project for the Good Shepherd Food Pantry. And we set a goal of trying to donate 500 food items when we heard that they were really struggling in November. And they exceeded our expectations with 1,210 food items, and so we celebrated with the students. They watched the movie, but we had a little surprise for them. The staff, which really stepped out of their comfort zone and did this pudding eating contest. And I'm telling you, the laughter that day was right before Christmas break, and those teachers had goggles on and they, they had their plastic on and they're going down. And I wasn't sure if Mrs. Holt Schneider was going to choke or if she was laughing. I don't know, but the laughter in there was so fantastic. So I think the students really enjoyed it. The teachers enjoyed it, and I don't know who did it. I think maybe Miss, Miss Sue did it, but somebody printed a million pictures from that day. It looks from all over the building, and so it just ended up being a really fun event. And I think just what we want to do is just keep that positive vibe going, and that we, the kids made a difference with the work that they did, and the teachers really celebrated and having a good time. So we also just tried to create a December to remember because that could be a hard time in the school year. And so we did a lot of activities that I kind of put on the next bullet point, and just a lot of things that the staff did. We had some dress up days, but we also had a lot of things that were just going on internally in our building to just keep that morale high and to keep that enjoyment of what we do high when it can be a tough month and it's going to be a tough time of year. The newness of the school year has worn off. We're really getting deep into data and things that sometimes aren't going as well as you want, or you're getting challenges that you just, you know, you're just, you're giving, it's a harder time. And so I just got a lot of positive feedback with a lot of the things that we were doing, and so I thought I'd mention that too, that we just always try to keep culture on the front burner and really speak to that and what can we do about it. And so just kind of want to mention that. Also, one of the things we've been working so heavily the last couple of years on reading and looking so much at our data. We, what we're noticing is that we're, our data is showing us that we are closing the gap on phonics, and we are getting our kids where they need to be. But are we creating a love of reading? Because we should be creating a love of reading. And so what we wanted to do was create a, win a reading challenge this year and try to get our kids just getting more miles on the page and turning them on to books. Are we really reading books? Are we really enjoying reading books? We also remember that last February, I don't know if you remember, we missed a significant amount of school in February to snow days. So we thought maybe if we could get a good reading challenge going on with kids, then maybe we would get them reading books. And maybe while they were home during some of those snow days, if we end up having those this year, they would maybe remember, hey, I could read some books. I could pick some more AR tests. I could share some of the books that I'm reading. And so every teacher, all the grade levels set some kind of a challenge to their students, and then each student, their challenge or their goal is set based on what their reading ability is and what, what would be good for them. So we worked heavily on that, and then we'll celebrate in March the success that we get from that. And just, again, just trying to bring out a love of reading and talk about just miles on the page and getting books in kids' hands. Birthday lunch, we had that. We're having that each month, and right now we're focusing on not just our birthday kids for this month, but we're doing our half birthdays. But those kiddos don't always get to celebrate their birthday at school, so we've had a lot of positive feedback from that. We did July birthdays and we did January last month, and then this month, in February, we'll pick up our August and our, our February kiddos. And the dental screening, we had, Nurse Sabrina did that for kiddos for K three, and we know that four or five usually does that in preschool too, so she's trying to find a date for that. And then I've just got several dates down there, and Coach Minix and I have been working together on maybe getting our, some high school readers coming up. We do our elementary kiddos for homecoming week, so we kind of working on trying to get some warm there. So kind of excited to see how that pans out. Hopefully we'll get that going. So any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Middle school, high school.
So we are back and at it. I know the kids are excited to be back. They lied to us. But so during Christmas break, a lot of times we'll lose some ground with our attendance. We were at 350 students before Christmas. We're at 348 now, so we're holding really, really steady on our attendance. We had lots of flu and structural go rampant that last month or two at school. We stayed at ninety four percent, ninety four point six nine percent attendance. So we're doing really, really well with kids actually wanting to attend school and getting there, which is really, really nice. So next semester, our focus, this semester is really big on our state testing that's going to be coming up in April. So right now, our teachers are really evaluating where our students are. They're doing some review, different things to make sure that those kiddos are ready to take those state tests come probably the middle to the end of April, hopefully ready to go, see some improvement there. On January twenty third, next Monday, we're going to have a PD day for our staff. What we found is that a lot of our staff are lacking some of those techy skills. So I have a Google trainer coming in who's going to be doing some Google training for our staff in the morning. It's going to be basic, you know, Google classroom, those kind of things for our newer teachers. In the afternoon, it's going to be some more of the more advanced things that they can do with Google classroom and all those different Google apps that are on there. So really, really excited, hopefully get some more tech stuff out to our students so we can get more one-on-one. Then we're really excited because we have two students, Annalise Spouser and Marissa Geller, who are selected as the STCLA Legislative Shadowing. So what that is, is each school in the state gets to nominate two students, and then out of all those nominees, fifty are chosen. So a lot of schools don't get one, we got two. So we're really, really excited and proud of those girls. They're going to go get paired up with a legislator, senator at our state level. They get to shadow them for the day, tour the White House and all kinds of cool stuff through FCLA. So I thought that was a really, really fun honor for those girls, really cool. And I also want to brag on our student council because they did a phenomenal job at Christmas time, keeping the spirit going. I absolutely love, we had an amazing last day of school assembly. Truthfully, for me, coming from elementary now to high school, it is so cool to see the kids actually take charge. I mean, at the assembly, I got to watch. They did it all, and I was so, so proud of them. So it was a really cool assembly, so I can't wait to see what they do for homecoming, which is going to be coming up here soon. And then we're also making plans for the 2023-24 school year. We're starting to talk about budgets and looking at what we can improve on for next year. So that's our goal this next semester also. And I added on the bottom all the dates so far that we have for graduation awards night and all that good stuff, so you can go ahead and get those on the calendar and ready to go. So any questions?
Is that number three fifty? After the students graduated early?
That's a good question, because all I did was I went into our SIS, so I bet you it's after them. Yes, that was what it would be, because we wouldn't have lost that. I mean, we would have lost more, because I think we had, I'm right, thirteen that graduated in December. Yes, which is really cool. So this would have been after they've already been taken out. So we are sitting at three forty eight right now.
Thank you. Student representative.
Good evening. There are Lynn Strope and Reed Baker, and we are excited to represent the Lynn HS Student Council. We are here to give you an update of student activities that have, have, have been held since November two thousand twenty two. Activities, winter sports, boys and girls basketball are on our poll screen, and the student section continues to support and have theme nights for, for each home game. The middle school and high school choirs and players and bands held a Christmas concert and performed to a packed house. The chamber choir performed on, on Friday night on Christmas on Main Street. The band cheerleaders, football team, FFA, City Council, or have looked at the Lynn Lions Club Christmas parade. It was a fun day for everyone. The drama club presented a play, Alibis. A C C alone baked baskets with O C cheering projects, Christmas program. The baskets were given to families in the program. The leadership class in student council hosted a Christmas assembly on Friday before this, the start of Christmas break. Many students and teachers were able to participate in some, in some fun radio games. Members from a high school band recently participated in a conference band at that one. FFA Green PM recently participated in a motivational conference in Sullivan. The high school city council group is working hard to organize a planned conference. The date of the game is February third, and the date of the held November fourth. The theme we decided on was board game. Seniors have monopoly, juniors have clues, sophomores have live, freshmen can game. Thank you.
Thank you. Athletics.
Good evening. There are two items that I wanted to talk to you about tonight. One is an update on our fall schedules. In the report that you received, you should see all of the fall schedules and where they stand right now. The things I wanted to talk about tonight, what were the things that I really focused on? I really wanted to focus on consistency and schedule. Right now, we have games in all sports every single night of the week, which makes it very difficult for our stakeholders and our athletes and our coaches trying to kind of get into a routine. So you can see on there that I tried to really stick to, to having some sort of consistency so that they can prepare for their competitions. I really tried to avoid competitions as much as possible on the day after a weekend. That is very tough for our teams to compete when they're in this structured routine. They leave for a couple of days and then come back and try to compete. Now, with some of the schedules, that's next to impossible, just with the length of the season and the number of competitions that they compete in. But we tried to stick, or I tried to stick to that as much as possible. I tried to include obviously all conference, but then also district opponents. Our previous schedules did not have very many of those, and so preparing for postseason play becomes difficult when you don't see those teams. And so I tried to include as many of those as possible, and for most of them, you know, maybe one, maybe two or not on the schedule for next year. And so that was, that was a huge bonus for us. I'm trying to get to the maximum number of competitions. A lot of our schedules, when I received them, were very low, the number of competitions. And so I tried to get up closer to the, to max within reason. Baseball softball, thirty-six possible competitions. That's, that's a lot. So I tried to find that reasonable number, talking with our coach, obviously first for that specific sport, and then just kind of getting a feel based on our. Five, I really tried to get coach input, talking about all the advantages and disadvantages of their schedules this year and what they would like to see going forward. And then our strength of schedule, right? Looking at the classes of all the teams that we're playing. Obviously, we want to challenge our kids and make sure that they are getting ready for postseason, but at the same time, not getting these gigantic schools that, that we saw on a couple of our schedules this year. And then the second, and then so in your back, you'll see kind of the highlights of each one of the schedules. The second thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is I am exploring, so Nisha this year has allowed sixth graders to be Michelle eligible for those sports. I'm diving into kind of what that looks like. I also made a list of advantages, disadvantages to each of those. And so, you know, as we go through the months, I will definitely update on where we stand with that. The more I dive into it, the more I just kind of realize that I need to look into that more, that there's a lot of hidden things that as I'm kind of going through and figuring out, okay, if we do this, there's other issues that pop up. And so I just want to have the full picture before, you know, we make any decision on that. Obviously, there are many advantages of adding sixth grade to our programs because of an entire another year. So now instead of seven through twelve program or six through twelve program, it helps our, our rosters. And you can see, I put A, B, C, and D in all of the, the teams right now that had low numbers, and I think that's going to increase that and hopefully encourage other students to come out as they're seeing full teams and us being successful. And I think that's going to help our community include the programs out because we're taking a whole lot away from them. Obviously, in our last meeting, I talked about kind of the financial aspect of where we are in athletics. With, with adding sixth grade, there's a, there's an added cost to that, so I just need time to fully develop what that picture looks like. And then obviously, the big one is, once we add sixth grade, taking it away as we continue to grow or we get to the position where we can include sixth grade, that then becomes a difficult conversation on the road, right? So those, those are my big ones that I, that I just wanted to point out. And then in the back, I just threw a couple of quick highlights, so that's that. Any questions? You touched on this, but I think you said A, B, C, and D squads. Oh, no, sorry. I just pointed out in the A, B, and C, like which programs were low and where they kind of stood, but sorry, go ahead. So would sixth graders only play on the seventh grade team, or could a sixth grader play on the eighth grade team? I know you, I remember a little bit of our conversation with this, and I think I asked the question about, do we still have an eighth grade team, a seventh grade team? Or does it become our A team, B team, regardless of grade levels? That makes sense. So there are kind of two trains of thought, and schools in this area do it in two different ways. There are schools that strictly go eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade. When I was in Columbia, that's how we did it. We had an eighth grade team, A and B, seventh grade team, A and B. When I then moved to North Kansas City, we did A, B, and C teams. We, here's the great example. We had two seventh graders that were ranked number one and number four in the state reserve. We didn't keep those kids on the seventh grade team because we want to make sure that they maximize their competition and their growth, right? And they're not going to see that when they're belonging on a team because they're stuck on the seventh grade team. And so ideally, I would like to see just A, B, and C teams, and those kids play in their level of competition that they would, they would be at. I don't know if that answers your question. I was just curious.
When do you have to make that decision by?
We can do that anytime. I was emailing back and forth with Nisha, actually just again today, and they said, as soon as we fill out that form, turn it in, we're ready to go. But I just think that there's a lot that we, that I need to discover, right? And then just see if that works within our budget. Obviously, with us growing all of our teams, we would have to have additional supervision, right? And so as we're expanding these teams, there are some areas in some of our programs where I think we already need more assistant coaches. And now adding numbers even more, right? We would, we would need to have that conversation, and I think that becomes bigger than we just turning in a form of the discussion we probably need to have here.
What are the other schools our conference do?
There are some schools that, oh, as far as sixth grade, like New Bloomfield had sixth graders on their team this year. I think there were one or two others, but I, that's a piece that I just wanted to dive a little bit deeper into.
I want, I want to comment on two things. One, I appreciate this level of detail because I, I, you know, I haven't been on the board for too awful long, but I've never seen this sort of information, and I appreciate the amount of thought that's going into, that you're putting into trying to craft the right schedules and find the right opponents and everything. Because I think that that will, you know, set them up for success better. Secondly, my oldest is in fifth grade and they played fifth and sixth together this year, and that was all good and well, but it was very short season. And it kind of left those girls wanting more, I think. And so I think any any change or improvement that we can make to that would, would be good, because I think if you went back and looked at when, you know, when I was in school and at some point, we, the Lynn public school kids were not able to play with the pals league, which is what St. George and the Perky of schools do. And at some point, we were told we couldn't, could no longer do that. And I, I think that if you looked at that date and then looked at the basketball team since then, I think that actually impacted our participation numbers, because back when we did that, we had room and we had a lot of kids participating, and that has gone down quite a bit in basketball.
That's definitely one of the things that, you know, I'm, I'm very passionate about, you know, right?
That's definitely one of the things that, you know, I'm very passionate about, you know, right? It's heartbreaking sometimes when I see how many kids should be playing or should be participating in some sort of activity. And so I think this is one of the main strategies that I'm trying to take to increase those numbers. We should have full teams in all, all aspects of everything we do. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Wait, no.
So again, talking about our staffing and productivity, there are still two positions out there. I hadn't had any hits or any applications on those. We'll check it. Still got the event coordinator or the event historian and a full-time historian at U of U, but. We're making it, we're making it. So as far as scheduled maintenance and repairs, nothing's always scheduled right now. I do have like a couple of bids which I'll discuss down here out that may end up being done next month, but not this month or next month. But I won't know until those bids end. Unscheduled maintenance and repairs. Well, that's a pretty long list over break. I guess you all heard about our water issue in our gym. In the coach's office, it was just an elbow up against an IV. Hadn't been that cold before and decided to, it ruptured, so got it fixed pretty quick, couldn't miss. There was actually minimal damage there at all. Luckily, I got the call as I was leaving the parking lot, so jumped in there, shut the water off. Then we did have a few other breaks. We did have one at the ball field down there, even after putting the heater, small heater in there. To keep things warm, we did have spring leak down there. No damage to any of them down there. It's concrete floor. We got the water out and moved on. Did have a leak also spring in the weight listing room, but unfortunately it was only in the spigot outside. So we didn't discover that till we tried to use that spigot. And now it is, we repaired it, soldered it back together, everything's going there. You have an issue with the walking cooler. There is an evaporator leak inside. They are recommending that we replace both units because it's the outside unit is actually so old. That it's not going to be compatible very well with our indoor evaporator if it's replaced. I am awaiting bids on that. That's what I was talking about with the. With some of that, I may say may be coming up. And I don't know if you guys are aware about our grounds where she pump issue. We had a rated line that goes from one of our grounds where she pumps in the high school. It ruptured. Causing quite a bit of a flood, a little bit of damage. All systems have been repaired, but I think that's just a prelude of what's to come because those systems are going on twenty years old. So we might need to start looking in the future, looking at starting replacing some of those units if we can. I reached out some outside assistance to handle a little issue that we had in elementary, a little varmint issue and it has been taken care of. We had another unit over break develop a refrigeration leak that was fixed to, we discovered it while we were. We were working in the building, but it wasn't functioning. It was actually for the main cafeteria in the high school. So Superior Service Team, they fixed that right up. As far as our maintenance shop and our equipment, our Bobcat is still being serviced. A hydraulic issue's got fixed. We got it back. It moved about ten feet and now our electrical system is functioning. So it's completely inhabitable. They have had it for quite some time. That's another issue that I'm having, trying to get the. Long jump pistons whenever I do, it does dry up. So hopefully they'll get that. Forklift is down to wait till we get our Bobcat back and figure out how to get that fixed, I guess. And that's probably going to be outsourced to somebody probably, Coach Place I see was in just for that. As far as our contract and services, we'll have to get with those bids on that walking cooler and I'll let you guys know about that. Long jump pits are done besides the back fill. It just got so seepy down here that we couldn't push anymore of the tractor and stuff and make it more rest than we were. So we've just been holding off. It is draining well. Just need sand in here. Actually, you can go up there and jump in them now with the gravel that we laid in there under underneath the sand. And it's always been staying pretty dry. So I'm pretty happy that it actually worked out. So facility grounds, nothing really out of the ordinary to report there. You know, just. Kind of finish this up and anything else that comes up to be maybe repaired. Future projects. Down here, I'm going to fix the drainage issue that is coming off the area of the ball field on this side. It kind of drains down to the same area as the long jump pits when it rains real hard. So think about putting, kind of like we did there, maybe a French drain or something to get that water to run off. And actually go into the drainage issues that were set and pulling. It actually gets into the dugout on that side too. Causes a mess with mud, so that needs to be fixed up. Also, what I'd like to do, the fencing around the. The track, I'm taking care of, push back upwards straight. And talking about getting it, resurfacing them up the track and fixing. That shot put area there that's on that incline. So that is all something we're trying to get taken care of. Preventative maintenance program is working out well. I started using a program called Fix, IIX. It's actually a free version right now and you're putting all your assets in there as far as your diaping systems. Any of your other HVAC, anything in the kitchen, put that all in there underneath their location. Set a time, certain filter changes, it reminds you, say, okay, your filters are due, they'll pop up. Actually working out pretty good, just trying to get everything inputted into that now, that way whenever I implement it fully. It'll just be like a reminder of, okay, well, it's time to do the filters on the diapins. It's a, it's time to check the HVAC on the heat pump side and stuff like that. Where we can eliminate some of this surprise repairs that we've been experiencing. That fixed version, I would probably like to look into this, see how it goes. It is a very small feature, paid version, but it's a lot more options. And I could actually give more users and actually give access to, say, are we, because so you and me. You guys and you could just put stuff in there saying that it just needs to be done. It'll pop up on our phone, on our laptops, everything. And it would organize it under like high school, middle school, elementary. And then I can assign it to whoever, me, Kyle, janitorial staff, and then they will get that message. And they will be respected to finish that task. But I hope I have, you guys have any questions for me?
So do you have everything in that system? Since I know you're short staffed, are you just kind of learning as you go?
For the fixed system, I have got most of the assets put in there in subcategories as far as the equipment in those assets. Right now I've got me, Kyle, and Bob in there so they can access it. So Bob actually can track what's going on to. See what we're working on, how long, you know, there's time limits on there too that we put in there. And I'd like to prioritize it. So say something that's a safety issue or something. And it will pop up and if I put it's a safety issue, so that's priority and it will be put on top of the list, you know, we'll give you data, remind you saying that you have this task. So, but being short staffed, yes, we are short staffed right now. So. The application's coming in, would be amazing right now, but I haven't really seen anything. So. I have a good staff and I did a helmet, the job guard program that I've been talking about so much and it seems to be working out. Really well. I haven't had any real opposition toward you. Everybody's on board, so. I think it's going to work out and we can get some more organization and get things on a. On a real track to improve and make sure that everything is framed. Exactly the way it should be according to our standards and Hilliard standards through our chemical contractor. So actually I got most of those recommendations and off of the Hilliard website and this kind of app to our facilities. Any other questions? I hope that answered any thing.
Thank you very much. So bring in a report.
Awesome. And there are community climate and relationships. The main focus is continuing to build relationships by being present in the community. But also as we finished up, as we finish up mid-years through the end of this month, there'll be a concerted effort to be in classrooms. A large part of that is what's happening in our classrooms with our teachers. Regarding personnel and staffing, we'll also be taking a look at our staffing needs for twenty-three and twenty-four. You know, we've had a couple of, a few large elementary classrooms, classes that have been kind of marching up the way. And we're taking a look at what our staffing needs are going to be to accommodate those classes. A difficult for us, thing for us is just where are the size of our classrooms are landing. You know, I think third grade's about forty-six. But two twenty-three student classrooms are just, that would be too large. But at the same time, you get on the bottom side of that, the fifteen and a third went or fifteen, two thirds by the time you split that out in three classrooms. There's no just, there's just no good way to do that. But considering our needs in terms of student achievement, I think we need to err on the side of small classrooms. We'll also be talking about administrative recommendations for contract renewal here shortly, bringing that to you guys. Instructional and learning, part of our mid-years, we'll be walking through all of our classrooms with each of the administrators, taking a look at what's going on. We're going to refocus on data, including our state testing data, ACT, grade distribution, and of course, you name it. And then translating what we take a look at there into a district and campus improvement plans. Professional development. I want to remind everybody that we are going to adjust the process for next year. What we currently have is a professional development plan that we've been voting on is actually a procedure for approving professional development. But there isn't any professional development actually loaded in there. We'll work to actually identify areas for professional development in ways that we're going to resource them in our plan for next year. And as a matter of who's accountable for that, the student achievement at the building level anyway. Our principals are going to take a much stronger position in approving and focusing that professional development. Facilities, we've talked a lot about those. We'll talk a little bit more about our RFQ and some other things. We do have some spring projects, shot put field, the track, repair of the baseball and softball infield. Of course, that French drain, athletics and fine arts. I'm going to refer to Coach Minnick's report. Funding those programs is of course a priority and we'll be tackling those through our budget process in the next couple of months. Which moves us on to budget and finance. Planning season is upon us. We're about to get our county tax allotment here shortly. I think the twentieth of this month. And so we'll be putting pencil to paper regarding those funds and how we might plan to use all of our fiscal resources for next year. Also, in terms of budget and finance, this is an important one. Nearly every single superintendent that I talk to in our area is bringing up, they're asking me this question. Hey, what are you guys doing in terms of salary for your teacher? You focus on trying to pay your teachers and staff more. Everyone believes, or for the most part, most believe that that's going to be their competitive edge. So a lot of superintendents doing a lot of math right now, trying to figure out just what they can afford to attract great staff members.
Get a feel for what county taxes will do yet?
Or what our actual check will be. We're at about one point six million on the fund one side and about eight hundred thousand on the fund three side. For a total of about two, I think, two, two point three or two point four million dollars, which will balance our fund balance. In fund one and two in terms of a percentage to about fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent. Keep in mind, December, we get at our lowest. In January, we get at our highest because we get this major cash infusion. So fifty-eight percent is a bit misleading. We have to run the district on that for a while, but I think we're in a solid position.
So what point do we get a feel for whether the valuation's going up? I mean, I assume the valuation's going up significantly every year with all the apartments and housing values going up and that type of thing.
I'm working with Joe Kendrick on really dicing through what our actual numbers are and what we can expect as recently as Friday. I would love to tell you I know exactly what that's going to be, but I don't. Looking at just what our county check is, I think we're better off than we thought we would be. But I literally just got that number earlier today and haven't had a chance to look at last year's budget and just say, what did we think the number was going to be? And what did it actually come in at?
What are they, most of the apartments, do they lag, lag a year? I mean, we see that.
I don't know that. I don't know that for certain.
Mark, do you have any idea?
It should lag a year because construction has to be complete and then.
The revenue has to be realized.
Yes, and it would be.
Be approved.
The next, the next year then after it's complete before they can even charge. So if you completed something in twenty twenty-one.
Which not a lot got completed last year, but we should see realization of everything that was completed two years ago.
Yeah, so stuff that was completed in twenty twenty-one, this would be the first year that it would have been realized on their tax bill.
Very good.
If it was completed in twenty twenty-one, then I thought it was property that existed on the first day of that taxing year. So if it was completed June of twenty-one, then it wouldn't be until it existed. January of twenty-two, that that next year. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You think about it from a matter of like that little monthly form you get to fill out when you bought a new car. Or bought a different car and you have to fill that form out. There's a lag there because.
Through March one.
Yeah.
Any other questions or any questions at all? Or do you have anything else to?
Yes, sir.
All right. Action items, approval of the audit letter.
Our representative from Chipwood, honestly, I made a late request to get him here to present. I am aware that he presented to the board last year. Wasn't quite sure if that's something we did every year or not in board policy. It says they presented to us, but not necessarily that they presented a board meeting. So I didn't catch that. One hundred percent not his fault. He did provide a written summary of what he was going to read in his report that I, we put in the board. Folder earlier today. I do recommend that we approve the results of the audit itself, although we may have additional questions just because technically it got to us late, which. We weren't able to vote on that by the December thirty-first deadline, which is not all that uncommon with Desi. But we probably want to get that approved before January passes. But if you guys would like to speak to him directly and have him present the finer details of it, I will make sure that he's here for our February board meeting. We had talked a little bit about when we first got the digital copy a while back. There were a couple of larger issues in there. The biggest and what we were charged a hundred additional hours for last year was. Monthly reconciliation of our bank statements and that had a lot to do with how we handled cash mostly. It wasn't that we didn't deposit any cash or anything like that. We handled that well, but when we would, you know, you take it, take it to the bank on your way home. Well, really you should take it to the bank, get your deposit slip and put that into our financial software. And that's how our financial software reconciles or reads the same. And so they spent a lot less time doing that, less than half of that time this year as they did last year. One major advantage of having Chelsea here training during our audit was she was able to connect the reconciliations that the auditor. Was asking her for along with her training. We do that monthly and actually dang near almost a weekly basis now. So we should really just hand them twelve months of reconciled reports next year. So we should pay a lot less for those overage hours. for those overage hours. The other big thing in there was we still, we had, as of June thirtieth, we had too much money in our school nutrition. And we had to, to spend that, which we already do.
So that said, there were no findings though.
No, no fraudulent, no, not anything that was a major infraction or even a minor one for that matter.
Which is always good.
Absolutely.
All right. So I guess the, the question I would have from the board, if you, if we go back a couple of years, we had findings. Uh, and we really wanted to hear from the auditor themselves, okay, what, what's going on here? Uh, before that, I don't believe they had the auditor come in present.
Week last year was a long time.
Because we had findings here before and we just wanted.
We wanted to know exactly.
What was going on and that's why we brought in. Did they normally present?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I, our issue this time is, we have the and we've got the letter, do we want to have the auditor read the letter next time? Right, for the, for the record, knowing that we've already seen it. I'm, I'm good either way.
When the letter explained it more in depth to me.
All he's gonna do is come and read the letter or call in and read the letter, which.
I'm okay with, with the letter as presented. I think going forward, it would be good if we could get him, get him or her to present just because I, I think that um, that's part of the, to me, that's part of the audit is to hear from the auditor. So, so if going forward, we can try to, try to do that, that's, that's what I would like.
I'm comfortable either way. Uh, point though, uh they will charge us to come here and read it. And so there is a, a cost associated with that. I like the idea that it's, it's, you know, a higher degree of transparency and that's the sense. So I like that. It's not like we're not getting anything uh for our money, but we do have to pay them to.
Sure.
Yeah, but it was a breakdown communication between Bob and I on this. I mean, the, the audit letter is what? How long? Two pages? Do you want to redo the audit letter and that way we don't have to? I think that's the thing to do and that way it's on the record and then we can move on. Upper excited language.
No, it is not. So it is addressed to the Board of Education, OSH County, number two, School District, Len Missouri. Uh, it's, it's addressed to myself and the school board. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present a summary of the audit for June thirty, twenty twenty-two. We appreciate the help provided by central office staff during the audit this year. If any of you have questions, please do, please do not hesitate to contact myself or any partner in our office at any time. As stated on pages one through three, our audit opinion was unmodified, which is the best opinion that you can receive. Similar to last year, the district required a single audit because more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds were spent during this two-year. The single audit was conducted alongside the regular financial audit. If you look at the audit opinions this year and compare it to last year, you will notice the format changed. This was due to new governmental accounting standards that took effect in twenty twenty-two. The final, financial statements are on pages four through ten and include the government-wide statement of net position, balance sheet, government-wide statement of changes in net position, income statement, and governmental fund statements. Total cash increased by twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The general fund cash decreased twenty thousand eighty-nine dollars and debt service fund cash increased two hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars in twenty twenty-two. Two hundred and fifteen thousand was transferred from the general fund to the capital projects fund to help pay for capital expenditures. That was the HVAC system here. Uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, operating fund balances, general and teacher funds were thirty-nine percent of operating expenditures. This percentage was forty-three percent the year preceding, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one. We consider twenty-five percent a healthy ending balance. The district is above that figure. The footnotes on pages eleven through twenty-seven and provide a more detailed analysis of various financial statement accounts. Supplementary information on, is on pages twenty-eight through thirty-one and state compliance schedules are on pages thirty-two through thirty-nine. The district did not have any state compliance findings. The internal control and single audit reports are on pages forty through fifty-three. The district had no material weaknesses for the twenty twenty-two audit. The only significant deficiency we reported related to bank reconciliations, not reconciling to the ASBR. The districts also had a federal award finding relating to the ending food service balance. The imbalance in the food service program was higher than three months operating costs of the food service program. This was a common issue we saw in schools this year due to higher reimbursement rates for meals and more participation due to free meals. We recommend the district spend money in the food service area in fiscal twenty twenty-three to correct the issue. The audit communication letter is a separate report and is for the management of the district only. There were no additional issues to present to the management other than the two issues discussed in the paragraph above. We appreciate the opportunity to perform the district's audit and appreciate the help from central office staff. Please let our office know if you have any questions. Thank you, Jeff Chipwood.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the audit letter? Second. Further discussion? Although, you do approve the auto letter, right, right hand? Both the same. Motion is approved. Some boy to bond.
Pretty broad to, broad topic. Uh, we've had uh previous discussions about fund three and our balance of fund three. Uh, honestly, our community has put us in a great position uh where that's concerned. Uh, a specific, the specific purpose of fund three is only to pay off indebtedness or indebtedness payments, for instance, a bond. The only other services that can be paid through fund three are services provided in the management or maintenance of that debt. And so if we had, say, an underwriter or a bonding agent, you can technically pay their fee out of that, that fund. So we end up with quite a bit of money that uh we can only pay if we pay debt payments with it. We currently have more money going into fund, we have enough, more than enough money going into fund three to make those payments. So it brought up uh with me anyway, with the, the sheer number of some of our needs and repairs and equipment and that type of thing. That maybe uh we should consider uh right, running a bond, a no-tax increase bond. And so that was my initial pop thoughts, although that is not the only option that we have for that balance. We could also just simply choose to pay down our debt service uh balance from our last bond as well. That would be something that we could do uh with that money. Uh, and it would bring us in compliance uh fairly easily. A couple other options that I outlined was maybe using our bonded capacity from here to the end of our current bond, which could get us a little bit more money uh if we decided to run that. Uh, for several reasons, our two real options are to pay down our debt and really take a, a longer, harder, or intense look at what our long-range uh district needs are and then go ahead and run that in uh, in the future. Or we could do a smaller uh bond right away that would take care of some of our more immediate needs. I would recommend that we actually, and this is not a spot that I thought I was in early on in processing. I would actually recommend that we just get into compliance by paying down our current bond and indebtedness uh instead of running a bond in January. I think it would address some very legitimate needs that we have, resurfus, resurfacing the track, for instance, taking care of the high school HVAC systems, giving us fits and, and a few other things, but I think we can also do that with our fund balance. You know, I think all said and done, we're gonna be in the low to mid thirties as far as fund balance and that's with us tackling some pretty big things. So to give you an idea, oh, I think five percent of our annual operating budget or fund balance would be about uh three hundred and sixty to three hundred and eighty thousand. That could more than pay for resurfacing the track. Uh, doing some of the other, the other projects that, that we had spoken about previously, but those really are our two options. Um, my recommendation is we pay that down. Here's, maybe in the next month, uh, we do a request for qualifications uh with a planning and architectural company and really run out a ten-year uh district plan that we direct our uh, our debt service funds to. Our other option being, we could go ahead and take care of some of our immediate uh needs now. But I also think that in, in one year, we would be in a much better position to run a focused and long-term plan uh that I really think our, our community would be excited about and support. So that is the question. Do we, do we go ahead and spend the balance as a bond right now or do we use that to pay down our debt service?
So I think a lot of it comes down to I mean, how, how does the community feel? I mean, we, whether our, having a uh, I mean, I think several of us have talked individually that our ultimate goal is to get the students out of the basement. Uh, what is our best opportunity to make that happen? Is it of no increase bond now, get some things done to show we can get some things done? And then ask for something bigger later? Or do we pay down this debt, say, hey, we're gonna be super frifty right now, come up in the next year, a bigger package that might include, if we don't do the track now, but might include some of those other things, but also would also look at hopefully something with the, the middle school at some point in the future. It could include other things, but the, the middle school seems to be, I think we can all agree, what was acceptable fifty years ago when we put the students in the middle school is much different and looks acceptable today. So I, I think that's a discussion for this group to have. What, what do we think? And it's very hard to answer that maybe tonight without talking to folks, but we have a feel for maybe the pulse of the community. What do we think would, would make sure that we're successful? And I'm not so much worried about short-term, but what makes sure we're successful in, in a year or two and go? If we look for something bigger.
I think, I think that um, you know, if you tackle a few of the we're able to tackle a few of the low-hanging items that we keep talking about, like the track. Uh, that would be good, but I think having a clear goal and a clear vision um, when we go for that ask is, is paramount. And I think that I think it would be better if we had, if we could lay out a long-range plan, I think I think our community would be more willing to get behind it because they would see the long-range goal is, is all spelled out. So I, I kind of like route myself, but um, either way, I, I think it seems like we all agree that there, there are a few items that we want to tackle in the future. So maybe we need to fine tune that a little more before we go for that ask.
I agree with, as long as we can fix the track and the other emergency things. And they're putting off the track and putting up the track. You can't turn it off anymore.
No.
So I, I mean we can't. But I don't foresee anyone building to increase their taxes right now. So I, I'm looking for waiting for a larger bond issue until we get all of our debts in, we can tell people what our plan actually is.
And, and just for clarification, if we do a small bond, it would be a no-tax.
That's what, I wouldn't want to do that either if we could get something larger in and down the road, if we can afford, if we have the money to fix the track and our emergency things now and not do the no-tax bond.
The reality is if you vote for no-tax increase, a year or two later, everybody feels like we just voted on a bond.
If we're coming to do something larger.
And, and it would tie up some more.
Yes.
And I, I think who, if you go for an ask either way, people, they don't, I don't know that a lot of people differentiate between no-tax increase bond issue, like they're being asked either way and so if we are going for an ask.
Yeah. I tend to give everybody an opportunity to speak on this one, so.
Honestly, if we use this money to pay down our debt, next year, we're going to have more money in that debt service account again. This issue is gonna keep coming up until we have a bigger plan, honestly. So if we have fund balance to handle our immediate issues, I don't see there being an issue with waiting and maybe interest rates will be lower.
That is, that is a big one right now. I mean, folks in the banking industry saying that rates will come down as fast as they went up, so.
I'll just say, I feel like it's in line too with how we were discussing having the athletic programs, figure out what are their needs. I mean, also getting with the teachers, finding out what their needs are, coming up with that bigger plan. I feel like it's in line with previous discussions we've had.
All right. So do we need to actually do anything tonight or we'll just move on? Or do we need to vote to pay down or can that, can we kick that can down the road a month or two?
Uh, I think we can kick the can down there. I would think we would need to vote if we would move forward. But if we're just deciding that we're not going to pursue, I don't think of those necessary. Important to, to note though, uh, and maybe this is jumping out a little bit. Uh, right after that is uh board in candidate final. To note, if we would have decided to pursue that, uh, we would have per our own policy been forced to run uh, a candidate or a board election regardless of the number of openings or applicants. By not pursuing this, we did have the three openings. Uh, we had our three folks uh file for candidacy again. So by our own policy, we are not required to run a board election. I would just need uh to place a notice in the newspaper.
All right.
And roughly, how much money will that save?
Uh, she, you know, I, I asked that same question. It depends on the number of items on the election that year because everyone pays a portion of the election costs based on the number of items. It took me a while to get that answer, but I found that interesting. There is no flat rate. It's cheaper the more things are on, that are on uh the ballot.
Um, we have decided not to run the no-tax bond, yet have clearly stated that we will be able to resurface that track though, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think, I forget who's, what in what conversation, but of course, uh, fund balances is always an extremely important topic. We want to keep the, the district uh financially doing well. Uh, I forget which conversation, but someone said, that's the reason why we set it aside. That's the reason why we build it up. It's not going to put us remotely close. Desi is twenty percent. Auditors say, hey, add five percent to that. We're really good shape. Right now, we're at fifty-eight, fifty-nine. I think we'll end up around thirty-five somewhere in that neighborhood after operating expenses. So we're in the, the thirty-ish plus. Uh, and probably closer to thirty-two, thirty-three when it's all said and done. So we'll still be in great shape.
So it sounds like we need to get new estimates on the track.
ASAP. We'll reach out to that company very, very quickly and get them on site.
Cause isn't that like a cooperative price or something anyway, so we don't have to put it up for bid because it's a root price already.
Correct. McConnell has a, it's either GSA or if not a GSA, though, it's a contract price.
I have to look at what the distinction is because I, I, I would know, I, I believe I remember reading. That the bid and the numbers that we had didn't have to go up for bid, uh, but I didn't, I didn't get far enough into the issue to really point out what.
And, and last time we did get a couple of bids, and even with that, McConnell was much, much cheaper than the, the other firm we looked at, but. Let's start there and see how much the cost has gone up. And then at some point in the future, maybe put a RFQ in here where we get an architect on board to help us with some of this planning.
I would love to do it in February, if, if you guys agree, uh, we've already tentatively placed it on the February agenda, the RFQ for an architect, so.
Right, which. For anybody listening, that doesn't mean we're moving forward with building something, but we need to get an architect on board to at least figure out. Square footage, approximate cost, that type of thing before we take any other step forward.
Honestly, uh, school districts do that very often because it's rare that we go through a bonding process. In almost all cases, uh, contracting with an architect or, or a large, long-range planning. Will save us a great deal of money in the long run, it is absolutely smart.
Or it could be, I mean, we may wanna talk to uh the outfit, the owner's rep outfit, get their recommendation.
I think, didn't Porter and Associates do something for us?
Would have been before my time.
I think. It's the architect, I think it's Porter and Associates came and did a walk around and put something together.
Oh, I remember that, that was more of a. Tried to drum a board type of thing, yeah, I do recall that, probably.
I might reach out to them for a copy of it because I've been looking through.
I know they did a walk around and took measurements and that kinda stuff.
Yeah, but the architects that did this, when I was on board, they were very easy to work with. Unlike the ones we did at the high school.
Alright. It's been a day or two ago and.
I mean, you couldn't get answered, but you're always somewhere else, but the people who did this. Every time we had a meeting and concerns, they were here.
Very good. Oh, right. So nothing to do with board candidate filing?
They've already made our.
Awesome, good service contract.
Uh, forwarded you guys a little bit of that information, uh, simply stated, cost of goods and services went up significantly. Uh, Fresh Ideas has broached us with an increased uh cost estimated, what it would. Uh, take to cover their interest in the contract. Uh, those adjustments equate to about a little over seven thousand dollars increase in fees billed to us. Through this next uh semester. A CPI was a point of discussion when the original contract was renewed, but no adjustments were made at that time. Just as a little background, I've been, you know, I just always call other people who have more experience with me. This is a fairly common conversation happening right now across the state. Uh, got some information of a couple, I think Steelville, um, Goodman or Gorman. Have done something similar and, and probably uh more than a handful or two across the state are, are uh amending their contracted prices now. Of particular importance, we have a couple of options, I mean, we obviously haven't agreed upon contract right now. Uh, but if, if we do or don't, I think it's important to make you guys aware that there is a sixty-day option for us. Uh, that our contract could be canceled for good cause. Uh, while it's not ideal to renegotiate a contract in the, in the middle of that term. Uh, we've got a lot going on right now and I can't imagine uh working on a plan to feed our kids from March to the, the end of June. Not that that's happened, but I, I think it's important that, that I point out that, that, that is in the spectrum of responses. Although there's nothing that would indicate we're at a bad year. But it is an increased cost, seven thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars based off of our annual meals served to students. For this next semester.
Sorry, he's saying that that's the annual cost or half of the annual cost?
That would be the an- anticipated increase in costs just for the spring semester to get us through June.
So next year would be twice that.
And I think at that point, I think um. You were originally in your original five-year contract on the fixed-rate sheet was going up like a three percent. Um, so you're, we're gonna be looking at CPI basically for your twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
CPI stands for?
Consumer Price Index.
It's basically, we ran uh an increase on yearly about a three percent CPI. Uh, that's kinda how it goes into on that fixed-rate contract, uh, we're at eight point four right now.
So when we did this, I was early on the board and I was opposed to it. I said, uh, because it was presented to us as a cost reduction. But if you did real math comparing four-day to five-day a week, it was actually an increase, so then. I said, the only reason I'm voting for this is because I and everybody else knows. That CPI is going to be far above three percent. So CPI would have been one point three or one point nine percent, you would not be giving us money back.
No, and I think on that, the flip side of that, Dr. Strong, is that. If we get to, you know, year three or year four to a contract and we see that CPI has dropped. Um, you know, we, we wanna be your partner in this situation. We want you to be able to come to us and say, it's, you know, we wanna lower our rates because our CPI has dropped dramatically. And I think we would be open to that, um, I mean, I'm here representing uh Fresh Ideas. Truthfully, I don't have the authority, you know, I didn't send, I sent Bob the email. That, that comes from somebody above my, above my pay grade for all uh reasons for. Answering questions to negotiate, I think you could reach out um to our corporate team and have those discussions. I don't think that's off the table, I don't think it's a matter of, if you don't wanna do the seven percent, can we partner and do a buy? Uh, I think that's, that's totally on the table.
I, I think given the discussion we had then, which was, we know CPI is gonna be much higher than that, either somebody in your corporate said. I'm gonna ignore all the data out there, or they said, screw it, we're gonna do what we have to do to get this work. And we'll renegotiate a letter later, so I have to believe that's what they said, we'll renegotiate it later, which given that. Uh, I definitely think we should not be increasing by the full CPI.
I mean, I understand, um, I do remember when we first contracted, um. When we were talking about fixed-rate contracts, it's very common for us to just put a three to four percent in there.
I would've jumped on that too, I would've said three percent, if you want, which is what you did, you said three percent for the next. Uh, one, two, three, four, five years, potentially just shy of three percent, I think, but uh, three percent, and that's why I said. This is an increase, but I know we're gonna come out ahead in the end.
And, and one thing I would say, this is, pressure is, is never, not once have we come into the middle of a fixed year, of a five-year fixed contract and ask for an increase. It's not common practice for us, um, I think Bob, you know, shared that, um, there's a lot of that going all around the state of Missouri right now. As far as management companies, you know, doing an increase.
Which, which is a, a risk of doing business, I mean, that's when you put three percent, you know, you're gonna lose on some years and you're gonna win on these some years. And you just hit what we all knew. Almost all of us knew, this shouldn't be doing this type of thing.
Um, the tough part is, we're in a position where. We're not asking for an increase, so we have a probability of, we're asking for an increase, so we don't have a, have a negative at the bottom line this year.
Yeah, like I said, that's a risk to take when you enter these kind of agreements.
I understand.
So, I mean, we can vote and I'll be a no vote on it, or I would just going back to corporate and say. Hey, they, they knew the reason they entered this contract is they knew they were gonna come out ahead on this. We, we really should meet him halfway on this, I mean, that, that's where I'm at, but.
Think it's unusual in the middle of a contract to change your pricing, uh, working for the state of Missouri? I haven't.
I'll agree with you, I sent there, that's something we've never done, um, I've been with the company for five years, I've never seen a K twelve um rate increase.
I'm not going to students across the street and saying, hey, my costs went up, I need to check, I need to check tuition up halfway through the year.
The comment on what you said, though, I will say, with the state of Missouri, there are a lot of contracts for construction projects. And the costs of construction projects have also gone up significantly, so there are cases where we are meeting people halfway. And saying, your losses are gonna be exorbitant, we'll cover fifty percent of that if you can show that it's due to inflation. So I think that there are some cases where that's happening just because inflation is so much out of the ordinary right now. I would be okay with meeting them halfway on it, going back and saying, can we talk about five percent maybe? Cause I do think that's fair, there is a risk of doing business here, but we don't want anyone to have a, you know, huge loss.
It's part of doing business, so, I mean, it is, I mean, construction industry right now, you're.
I'm not saying. There are some instances where that is happening. So what does this mean to our families if we're increasing the costs, is there any additional costs to those that are paying?
No, we wouldn't pass this along, we would use some of the over that we have in that school nutrition that our auditors pointed out again. We would just use that money to offset this cost, so we wouldn't pass this on to students or staff or families at all.
I'm kinda troubled by this. When, I mean, I would have thought that the time to increase this would have been last summer when we revisited this and. Kinda bothers me that, that we have to discuss this happen this week, and also after, after the semester starts.
So part of what we were referring to earlier, or what Miss Pike was referring to is, you know, if we got ahead per se in CPI. Then it could be negotiated in reverse, but it is true that that negotiation would typically happen in the summertime, it, it wouldn't happen mid-year. So that's embedded in the contract that it's renewable for five years, but on the fifth year, it must go out for, for rebid. And so, yeah, there is a bit of back and forth, but it would be extremely rare if we chose to do that mid-year.
What year are we on for renewals?
You're on year two of your contract.
So it'd be another three years before we could change the contract?
No, we couldn't, no.
You could go up the bid anytime that you're comfortable.
No, I was saying the contract that we hold with you, if we wanted to change to where the CPI changes in our benefit. Then we would be able to work out something.
I spoke with Darla, Desi, um, you know, throughout this process, um, this isn't unique to just Osage, this is happening in all of our public K twelve accounts. Um, and she basically, Darla had um expressed that. Within your five-year contract, you can negotiate either direction, either way, and that'd be sufficient for Desi.
So is this, is the prices that we have, is it on this document that it's written for Steelville?
I think I had sent.
Yeah, we, we got an updated one today, I thought we had switched those out. The only change would be the, the name of the school, this is what we've done there, we thought.
Mark, this is the original proposal, and they shows exactly what each of those would, will cost the next five years. But I think what might set us apart a little bit different, differently than maybe some of the other schools you're talking to. We started this at the exact time we knew the CPI was going to be significantly higher than this. And, and I think that's where we're a little bit different, we said, the reason, at least I said, the reason I'm agreeing to this. Is I know that we're gonna come out ahead on this.
Sure, I mean, Dr. Strong, I think when we, um, you know, we bid this out a couple of years ago in the middle of, uh, you know, before the. Before we started the contract, we were in that, you know, that time of a financial uh moment. Up until this point, I think it was unprecedented, I, I mean, I know we build those kind of costs and we build the CPI increase in for our food costs. For our supply costs, for things that we're gonna be responsible for, it's just very, it's just unprecedented, we just didn't see it coming this high. And it's unfortunate for us.
Say, I did, I mean, most of us knew it was, we're dumping trillions of dollars into the economy, we knew we were gonna have runaway inflation.
Yeah, I think we saw it coming, we recognize it, we just didn't um see it go this high. Our food, it's just, you guys can see it in grocery stores, I'm sure.
And so, I mean, you're a business, I mean, I will say, uh. You got caught, I mean, you got caught with, and you're caught in a bad situation. And you're looking for us to bail you out, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's what's going on, so I would say, again. I think we should negotiate something rather than. Eight, fourteen thousand dollars a year, but. I do think we're in a different position than somebody that's been with it for the last five years, that. Well, you know, I say that, but, I mean, when we went from doing it ourselves, for Fresh Ideas, the cost is about fifteen percent. If you look at real numbers, the cost is real money, I mean, it's not, and the only, again, the reason, the reason I was willing to do it, it's three percent. I knew exactly what kind of deal we were getting. Oh, the increase, yeah, the middle of the semester, may always make more sense, let's be talking about next fall.
And that's maybe part of a negotiation that we can go back to, to my boss.
We'll have that natural break when we renew the contract this summer anyway. Uh, and so i- in terms of coming back and renegotiating, based on your statement that it goes both ways. I, either way, we'll have that natural break, so I think the real question is whether or not we are just gonna wait out to that natural break. Or uh, whether we're, we're gonna uh move forward, we're making some change now, I think that's the big question.
I'd say if we're gonna negotiate something for the semester and moving forward, let's do it now if we're not gonna negotiate. Wait till this summer, do it, cause then we're gonna take it in the pants anyway, and we're gonna be stuck with CPI. I don't have the problem being fully transparent with you.
Basically, you, you've got some options, you're looking at, one, do we sign up on the rates? If you don't sign up on the rates and you wanna do a negotiation period, I think um that's totally appropriate. And we can, and my boss can get involved at that point and, and provide that negotiation period to you. Other than that, you've got, you could just say, no, we're not signing up on your rates, and that then is gonna push a sixty-day from either you or from us, one of the two. Uh, because we're in business, we can't just keep, you know, we can't come and, it costs us money to provide food service to your school, I mean, that's just. Tough for us to kind of swallow on our end, I think. Other option is, you could, you know, you could not sign up on the rates, you go up a bit, you could go ahead and cover this semester with the increase. So that you don't have that worry, um, and relook and consider going up for bid in the future. Um, I think you've got options here for, I don't wanna be the bad guy, but you need to.
And also, you're not gonna, I mean, if we started a sixty-day now, you could not afford to walk out on a school in March. I mean, you're not gonna walk away halfway through the semester just because of the bad press it would give you, so I'm not too concerned about the sixty days. So I'm not too concerned about the 60-days. I, I'm confident you'll get us through the end of the semester regardless.
I heard that there again. It's not my call. I'm not going to write you a 60-day notice. I'm just gonna do it just like you are.
Corporate is not going to want to walk out on a school halfway through this.
Seriously, this is tough for us. Coming to you and asking for a rate increase is brutal for us. It's not something that we wanted to do.
I think we should negotiate with them now. I mean, that's, I think we should do that. But what, is, is there resistance to that? You?
I'm going to negotiate, but I don't think she can negotiate.
I mean, I don't mean like tonight.
I think, you know, we could.
However, however she is.
I mean, if that's kind of what we want to walk away with tonight is, you know, Bob, get in touch with my boss, Brian Dittre, and have this negotiation contract, and we look at this on your February board meeting. I mean, I'm, I think we're open for that.
Okay. Are you good with that, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. No, there's no actually be taken. Okay.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And again, I don't want to be disrespectful. It's business, and you're in a tough spot, and we're looking after the best interest of the district.
Thank you for coming in and presenting to us.
I'll be back next month, and we need to bring Ryan in. You guys can ask those stuff questions to him when you are prepared.
You did a good job, though.
Thank you. All right. Discussion item. Special Ed Program Report.
This is where, unlike our typical monthly reports, our special education report has been in the discussion item of previous agendas. So we've set it back down there. This time, we'll reorganize those a little bit moving forward. And I'll probably bring that up in, in future board meetings, the, the frequency of all the different areas reporting. We may split that out to every other month or something.
Yeah. For now, good evening. For now, this is a start. Annual program overview. And of course, we'll, we'll talk more about what, what you all want out of me and that transparency, like, like we're trying to hit home on. So you guys should have in your board packets, and I just really, I'm a visual learner. So I was really hitting on like having this really fancy graph, and I'm like, oh, probably printed in black and white. So you all probably don't know even what that graph looks like. So overview is, right now, we are currently serving 71 students. That is pre-K through 12. So pre-K through 12, that averages out to be about 11% of our student enrollment. If you guys are anything like me, you look at that and you're like, what does that mean? So I compared that to, last year, we have dropped 1%. And you're going to see that fluctuation every single year. So don't, don't get too concerned about a 1% drop or increase or anything like that. And then I was curious, just on the state average, where we fall, state average is going to be 13.5% pre-K through 12. The biggest differential that I can find, just really digging into the state data, is we're one of the few schools that we don't serve any students that are English language learners. So that's where you see some increases in, in districts across the, across the state. So we're not serving any, any student that meets those needs at this time. And that kind of is why we'll see a little bit lower percentage compared to the state average. Just out of glance, you guys can kind of see the total number that we're serving compared to our total population. So right now, 15 of our 20 students in the Early Childhood Special Education Program are on an IEP. So that is the main goal of our ECSE program, our pre-K, is what you all might know it as. Our goal is to find those kiddos that do have a slight developmental delay. That could be speech errors, that could be a number of things, but that's the beauty of that program is we really hit on it. And then we maybe don't see those numbers in K through 5 numbers, or our 6 through 8 numbers, or even our 9 through 12. Let's address those needs early on. We have a great program that's rolling right now. So very happy with how that's going. Elementary grades, K through 5, we serve 43 students, nine students in middle school, and that did shift. So if you happen to just look back on last year's for any reason, sixth grade was added to our middle school, of course. So that, that altered our number a little bit on both elementary side and of course, the middle school. And then 15 students are being served at high school grades 9 through 12. And then there's just kind of a visual presentation to kind of, kind of show you what that, what that looks like compared to the total, total population. Other, other data, I just think is important to know, part of my job as Special Services Director includes 504s. Right now, we are serving 17 students. And there's each county R2 that have 504 plans. And one student at St. George that has a 504 plan, because I manage those as well. We have one student that is attending Missouri School for the Civil and Disabled. One student that attends Missouri School for the Blind. One student that attends Discovery Schools that is placed in Fatima. We do not have anybody on a homebound placement right now that is on an IEP. We have four students at St. George Proviel School that have an ISP. Now I'm getting into the fun stuff, and I'm sure you guys want to hear about my.
What is an ISP?
It's just, it's a federal regulation, so we can't give them an IEP, which is what we would serve in a public school. So they basically say, if you're going into a parochial setting or a parentally placed setting, we give them just a little bit alternative. We still manage it, but basically they don't have as many as the federal regulations that they would have here. Does that make sense? So.
Individual search.
Individual, individualized education program, not plan. I talked about this.
I'll quiz.
I'm sorry. That's brutal. They're all, they're all related services, so that's.
So what is Discovery Schools?
Sure. It is a specialized school, so it was, basically what we look at is, we look at it as a team, so we all come together. It is where they attend for a variety of different needs. I'm trying to be careful for laws and stuff like that. I don't want to say the wrong thing, but they, they really hone in on specific issues. So this kiddo is struggling with a lot of like behavioral issues, or, or behavioral needs, I should say. Or sensory needs. They can just really, they just elevate it to a higher level. And it, and it falls under that same classification of Missouri School for the Civilly Disabled. They can just, they could just really specialize in a level. And I'm careful to say, it's not that we couldn't have served that student. It's that they can just provide it at a much higher level and full transparency. Financially, the state actually issues us. We, we apply, and they actually grant us all most money back. They acknowledge that there's going to be children that have that additional need that we just simply can't provide in, in our traditional setting. So, yeah. So our shout-outs. Elementary has implemented a specialized program for students with those higher needs. Try and, we want them to be well-cuts, you know, coming in here every day. This is a data-driven approach, helped students with a variety of needs, not just academic. A lot of our kiddos, they, they have a variety of needs. Like, that's, that's what we're here for. So we, we acknowledge academic skills, language skills, motor skills, war. You know, we have some kiddos that, that toileting is one of their, one of their main priorities. And that, that data-driven approach is across the board, something that they're really hitting hard. That specific program is specialized for students with autism, so that's been really great. But what we're figuring out is a lot of kiddos just benefit from this, from this program and that, that rigor and that repetitiveness. So a lot of kiddos are benefited from that, which is awesome. Another shout-out, we anticipate having five seniors by UTEs graduate, which just makes my heart really happy. The trajectory is there. They're, they're really hardworking kids, just like all of the ones graduating are. But five IEPs and four with, with 504s are on track to graduate this year, so that's always great. Vocational rehab services are provided to our high school seniors, and I'll go into a little bit more detail. And pre, pre-employment transition services are provided for 16-years-old and older. And they actually just visited today, and we were standing out front, greeting students. These guys were like, who's that? I was like, oh, good, cool. I can brag on this for a little bit. So basically, you think, they meet with kiddos with IEPs that, we start having a conversation that every 16-year-old really needs to have is, what are we doing? Okay, all this ends, you know, when you rock across that stage, what's the plan? What is the plan? So 16-year-olds, we might be having a conversation of, I want to be an open-heart surgeon, or I want to be a secretary or a para. And then we just, every single year, and these, these guys are really professionals in that. And they fill out forms, and we bring in parents, and it's just a very strategic plan to make sure that although they do end whenever they graduate with us, they know what resources are out there and what their trajectory is for employment, or whatever that adult lifestyle looks like. And then at the end, that's when that vocational rehab, they work together. So pre-ETS, which is Pre-Employment Transition Services, and Vocational Rehab together, work to make sure we have a really solid plan for every kid with an IEP, that they have, they have a solid plan going forward. And I'm going to say solid plan one more time, just to make sure you all really get it. So our transition program, which is what we consider anybody 15-years-old or older, so it's exactly what it sounds like. What, what does that transition look like when, when they're no longer in our student population? They are rocking it. They actually won a grant about three years ago from Missouri retired teachers, and they wrote it, and they, I think it was $500. And they were really, their big thing was a coffee cart. They were going to walk around everywhere. And then beautiful pandemic happened, and we no longer are walking in between buildings, and nobody even knows what's happening. So they've kind of had to re-strategize. So you guys may have heard of the school store that started last year. We are, we are rocking and rolling with that. You may have also seen like on Facebook, we are doing crop pot meals, which I, I could talk about it all day. A lot of you all, if I didn't come up here and talk about it, you all wouldn't realize, these kids are learning skills that I wish someone would have taught me. They're actually getting the UD, and they're pulling out the ads, and they're looking, they're going, porkloins are on sale. Okay, let's look up recipes of porkloins. Awesome. Okay, actually, bell peppers are on sale too. When we look up a recipe, and they, they go through this entire thing, and then they go and shop, and they look, and they, and that's what they charge people. It's going to be $12 a serving. That, you know that that's not just because they want to make a little bit of money. That is strategically calculated because they learned these skills to be able to go from here to here, here to here. And they even goes to parcel delivery them. And they just, it's just skills that, that you, you can't match. And then those teachers are just absolutely rocking it.
And the food is really.
And it's good. It's a double win. So. I know. So this was the first year of like, really like, going out. So right now, it's offered to like our employees of the district, and then like the parents of some of the kiddos that are working it. So I would love to see it grow, but I don't want to overwhelm, overwhelm the kiddos or anything, but. And then we also had some requests of teachers in elementary, hey, when's that coffee cart coming back? Because like, hey, we're, we're a little bit more lax with, with our pandemic regulations. So they actually were able to, to start it. And of course, we picked a day that was like, it was grandparents' day. And it was like, what is happening over here in this elementary school? So they were, they were, they were troopers, and they did a great job, and we were able to get those. Some teachers even bought their whole class of hot chocolate or something like that. So it was, it's, it's great stuff. And I, I wish you all could see on a daily basis how hard these kids are working, and it's, it's just really important skills to have. This, this is huge for me, but we completed our requirements for our annual Dessie Compliance Evaluation. It says annual on here. It's actually not a three-year step, but big news, I put it in all caps, we are in compliance. Which in my world, that's like winning the lottery. There were a couple of things that they just wanted a little bit more, like, what'd you mean there? And we were able to easily get back into compliance, and I am just over the moon, over the moon about it. And I actually had to call my representative and say, this is good, right? Like, this isn't just the norm. And she was like, no, like, you should be really proud of, of the things that, that were done before me. So it is absolutely my plan that that, that will stay the same. And then the last thing is just full, full school involvement. I know in my world, sometimes it can get a little bit like, you're spin, and then there's everybody else, but we really do work hard, pre-K through 12. Classroom teachers are included in on every decision that's made. It's always team decision. Principals are involved. Counselors are involved. It's always a team decision, and I feel like we have a really good communication across the board that we try not to seclude ourselves in any way possible, because we all, we all love what's best for kids. And then ending on areas for improvement, which always, always have areas of improvement. But hope you recognize, I also know what I need to do to address it. So first is continue to update testing materials. It's not abnormal for, we could, I luckily have some contacts in some, in some schools that have really well-stocked testing materials, but I'm happy to call them and saying, do you have a PT assessment for kiddos that? Because they're so niche, they're very, very specific, and they're expensive. So that's just something that is always going to be on my trajectory. And of course, they always update it. So it's like, oh, we just bought the five, and they have six in two years. So it is something that is always going to be on my budget assessment. I just need to know that. Continuing to search for appropriate math curriculum, specifically in elementary world. It's kind of a running joke in, in the sped world that if you could develop a math curriculum for kids in special education, you'd be a millionaire. Because there just isn't one. There, it's for a good reason. It's very, you have a wide variety of needs that need to be met. So that's just something, if anybody knows me, I'm a big, like, I'm a talker, I'm a networker. I try and, try and conversate regularly. So I'm part of a, a group of all special education administrators. And we are constantly talking, hey, we tried this. It's, it's only for 10 weeks, but it's something that would, that we think would benefit kiddos that are needing this, this skill set. So I'll continue to do that. And then I have some great teachers that, that just may do without a, a specific curriculum. But that's something I really would like to get for them. And then lastly, continuing to keep all special education staff upstate on CPI certification. That's the state restraint training that we get. What's been tough is, as you know, paras are at low employees, and then just the education world in general, there's just turnover. So being able to track, okay, who's, who has a certification, who doesn't, who's is lapsing soon, you know, and all that. That's, that's just hard to do. And then in our role, it's always trying to prevent any sort of, you want everybody to be safe. So one thing that I'm able to do, and shout out to Mrs. Kingsley, because she sent me this, and I would, I grabbed it as soon as I saw it. She knows that this is a huge deal. I'm actually on, on the list for next month to become a CPI trainer myself. So then at that point, I can train as we hire. So if we hire somebody in February for a para, we don't really have to worry because I can, I can pull them in on a Monday or something and give them that training. And then on a, whatever the, it's every two years, so then we would, I would be able to very easily give them that training, and we would be very kosher in, in that aspect, and be able to, to meet that need and cover our bases there. So. Any questions? Thank you guys for letting me talk.
Thank you. Very thrilled.
I appreciate you being willing to jump in and tackle all of this.
Hey, I can't, I can't brag on my staff enough. They make, they make my job very easy. I just get to go and brag about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Draft calendar.
First draft calendar. I gave you guys a copy of that. Learned a lot through this process, actually. I was just always on the other end where I saw a few different versions, and we voted on it so that they could get staff input. Major points, we started our process really just changing last year's dates to this year's dates, but leaving all the coding. I hope that makes sense, because all the Mondays are already coded. It's red. It doesn't matter what day of the month it is. Of port, of important note, we did move from a 28 to a 29-day month in February. However, because of our earliest start date being the 18th, we don't pick a day up for that. The, that 18th is a Friday. That's the earliest date that we can start. Nobody wants to start on Friday and then come back next week, which would make our first date on the 22nd. So that was important because we had an overall shift. And when those Monday dates and Friday dates change, that changes our total number of hours. If you didn't know, to constitute a full year, it's 1,044 hours of instruction to certify that say a senior has actually gained a year of instruction. The state requires us to include six inclement weather days in there for about 36 hours. And by having a 1,044 plus 1,036, what that does is it makes it possible for us to only have to make up half of the days that we might miss due to inclement weather. Say we miss 46 hours due to inclement weather, 46 minus the 36 we planned for is 10. We would only have to, we would only have to make up five, half of that 10. Just looking at how we had created the calendar in recent years, there's also stipulation that says that if we will embed 60 hours over and above the 1,044 for a total of 1,104, then regardless of the number of days that we would miss for inclement weather, we wouldn't have to make up any of them. Looking at the last few years, that's the way we created our calendar. This being my first one, I just decided to, to continue that until I have reason not to. So based on that, there are no really big changes to this calendars. We kept almost all of our Mondays in the same place. We did look at the December, that two weeks of Christmas vacation was important to staff. I had six teachers that acted as representatives as pre-K through 12. Three at the pre-K through 5 level, three at the 6 through 12 level. That two weeks or so of full vacation was important. What we did do this year, you know, we. What we did do this year, you know, we, we, we went out for, uh, Christmas break fairly early this year. All we did was slide it where it went further into January. So we moved it from the fifteenth. To the twentieth of December, which allows us to come back more mid-week there in January. Uh, one of, some of the feedback that we got from staff was that coming back on that second. And then having a PD day and working out is a tough way for kids to return. That's a tough way for them to return. So we added a day. Uh, of, uh, no instruction there on that Tuesday, the second. The other major change that you'll see, uh, is an interest when we do, uh, and have done, we moved, uh, parent teacher conferences to Mondays. Cause we're out on Mondays. What that does though is create essentially a full day on Monday and then four successive days for staff coming in. By flipping it back to our old Thursday model, it does allow us to, to run parent teacher conferences on Thursdays and do a Friday flop. So that you can have a long week, but you also jump straight into the weekend after that long day of parent teacher conferences. That also helps us out with the week of Easter break. Cause it gives really kids that don't choose, or parents that don't choose to have a parent teacher conference that day. It gives them half of a day because we are going to attend. That, uh, one day that we missed the six point one seven hours, we chose to make that up by doing half-days on parent teacher conferences. So students will be released early that day. We'll get some of our six hours and seventeen minutes, a little on the fall. A little on the spring and then we'll do parent teacher conferences, uh, after that. So we haven't set on a time yet, one to seven, one to eight, somewhere in that, in that neighborhood. Not a lot of change. Parent teacher conferences flopping to Thursdays just for timing purposes. We've been just a little bit later due to the Friday and we're sliding Christmas break over. We did speak quite a bit about, uh, making room for a spring break. It's tough coming back in January knowing that your longest break is Easter. The numbers just didn't work this year unless we were willing, can't start any earlier unless we were willing to push, uh, into that whole next week. Of May, hopefully that makes sense.
When we, when do you finish?
Uh, we would have finished, right now we're finishing on the seventeenth. That would have pushed us into that twenty-first through the twenty-fourth range. Which would have also made us tight on summer school. We need twenty days to do that, which would have pushed us beginning summer school the last week of May. And finishing up somewhere in the neighborhood of the twenty-first of June.
So the four-day week kept some bearing on that, or is it always, we've never had spring breaks?
We have a spring break. I looked back, we had quite, like I looked at a thirteen, fourteen calendar where we did have a spring break. I do think that the four-day week makes it difficult to get your minutes in and a spring break. We don't actually lose a whole day on our current schedule, but we do lose a significant number of, uh, minutes. Four hundred and, well, depends on how you would adjust the day. But we, we at least in the hundreds of minutes per week as we go through the year. I can get you those numbers if you're interested in.
Be interested in how many minutes.
Total number of minutes, we're on a five-day versus total minutes on a four-day. I'll get those to you. In terms, I did look in preparing for this interview, by the way, and I just don't remember those right, straight away. At the five-day week compared to the four-day week, cause I was interested in lost minutes of instruction. We did lose time. We lost time.
Looked at, I don't know what they are, but there's, it's, it's less on a four-day week. I don't remember the numbers. I just looked at that.
Minutes wise, that would be a consideration in spring break for certain.
Well, we haven't got a week off though. It was usually tech on Easter kind of. It's kind of just extended the Easter weekend, like they got out early on Thursday and maybe had Monday off. I don't.
Yeah, it was usually.
It was never.
Wrapped around Easter.
It wrapped around Easter. It was never.
There was some days you don't do that.
Right.
So if we had snow winter, then spring break or Easter break, maybe good Friday.
Yeah, we've never had much. They may have called it spring break, but it was more just an extra bit on Easter.
This calendar was kind of a compromise of staff preferences. I did put in my report out, uh, to the teacher committee that. That could be on the horizon for us as far as some sort of Easter or spring break. But I felt like that was larger than the time that we had. That was a bigger, bigger commitment than the time we had to plan this calendar.
You feel like you have some parents that just take the time off and take kids with them?
You know, I don't know here. And honestly, I've never been in a.
Or would they tell you if they did? Or would they just say, hey, my kids are sick? That's probably what I do.
Your spring break.
Yeah.
I didn't know this fluctuation. It's, that was right around the end of the season. Like hyper cognizant of like, super low numbers, but you're always gonna have your one that they're. Got the family first planned in March and they're going, I see parents do that throughout the year, to be honest. I see they get Christmas vacation. I see them all. Taking vacation. I see them taking the big sensitive families.
So then a question becomes, if, if they had a spring break, would they just do it then? Or do, would they still do it throughout the year?
Yeah.
I do think important to this discussion and we talked a little bit about having the high school and the elementary present data over the next couple of months. Uh, just so we can put out there where our student achievement is. I, I think that we'll be far more interested in looking and putting a calculator to the number of minutes. Based on our student achievement after we go through our data. I think it, it has to be a part of our conversation to really look at how much time our kids are with us.
Good. So anything else on calendar? You get all the way through before.
Yeah, pretty rare. About the only thing shifting, uh, shifting, uh, Christmas break also. Balances out our fall and spring semesters. We were in about sixty versus eighty days. Uh, which for a high school, I've never been in that position before, but that means that, uh, somebody that's issuing point five credit. Has twenty days of instruction and in a four-day week, that's, that's five weeks. And so you have, uh, two different students earning the same credit, one in a, an extended or. A truncated, uh, semester, depending on how you look at it. That would be tough as a teacher. A lot of districts have moved to their semester ending just because of the change in requirements from D E C. To mid-January-ish, you know, somewhere around the tenth to the fifteenth. We, I think we ended up with maybe. Or what, I think I outlined it there, but let's see, sixty-eight full days, one half-day in semester one, seventy-six full days and two half-days, uh, semester two. We'll eat that up with, uh, inclement weather and testing. So it should be fairly even, I would think.
All right. Any other questions on calendar? It was up for pretty board policy forty-three twenty.
So we talked a little bit about this and I don't know that there was a heavy charge for us to do this, but, uh. We had considered taking a look, uh, and trying to be creative and, uh, filling positions to potentially, uh, award leave. To full year, yet halftime or partial, uh. Our partial employees. This discussion was in relation to our halftime music slash choir director stuff. So I went ahead and wrote up, uh, what that, uh, potential addition to the leave policy would be. That's leave policy forty-three twenty, which just says if we would decide to move forward with it. That whatever fraction of a full annual, uh. Uh, full-time annual position, you would be contracted for, you would get that same fraction of leave days. So if you're on a nine-month contract full-time, you get ten leave days. In this case, if you're on a nine-month contract, but only exactly halftime, you would get half of those ten leave days. We would award at five. Um, it's something that we talked about. I do think we need to consider being very creative and filling every nook and cranny position that we can. This is what that might look like if we chose to do it. Would you like me to read, uh, the addition?
Yeah, just for you.
So this is, uh, the addition. So the first part of forty-three twenty just outlines nine months gets ten days, ten month eleven. Eleven months, twelve days, twelve months, fourteen days. So that would also say. Professional employees whose assignments contract for part-time employment over nine, ten, eleven and twelve month contracted periods. Will receive annual leave as stated above in proportion to the full-time allocation. As an example, halftime employment for the duration of nine, ten, eleven and twelve month contracts. Will receive one half of the leave equivalent full-time staff members receive. Nine month five, ten month five and a half, eleven month six, twelve month seven. Professionals contracted employees are not eligible to roll over leave after June thirtieth. To the following year unless part-time employment is retained for that following year. So if we would. Have halftime, so you're awarded half and then you don't work the next year and you wouldn't come back the year after that with time accrued, roll them to that contract. There are some dangers in doing this. If, uh, you make it attractive to have part-time employees, you could end up with a lot of people. Uh, because they do look to have something with some flexibility and leave in it. If you make that more attractive. Then that might be something that, uh, more staff pursue. Most of the time we need full-time employees, not half-time.
By offering this, is there a chance that we could get some retirees that have a limit to the hours that they can work?
We may. We, we have that same opportunity now though. The, the question would be. Is having the leave dates as part of that? Uh, is that attractive enough to inspire them to do it when they wouldn't have done it otherwise? Cause that's all we're really offering. It would be, would be a change.
I see where you're coming from. I mean, I've always thought the nature of part-time, you're part-time, so you do have that flexibility. To take time off when you wanna take time off and you can make that time off during other parts of the week and full-time people don't have that ability to do that. So on the surface, I'd be opposed to it, but. I mean, if we see that this is what's keeping people from taking a job here, maybe. But like. Can't imagine that would be the case.
I feel like we're only doing this though because how badly we're hurting right now. Like, we're not really opening a lot of part-time positions that. This is going to qualify them to receive this benefit.
We had a part-time employee bring it up, right?
Yes.
Isn't that what this is?
Yeah.
So that's why, I mean, we're, we're talking about it because somebody has a part-time employee of ours who's wanted it.
It doesn't mean you're gonna go out and post a whole bunch of part-time jobs tomorrow. It's just to have it there for when it's needed and that's. Critical need right now. We don't have.
Once you, yeah, once you go for one person, you set the precedent.
We need to put it in our policies. So it's like, so we just have the one part-time or do we have multiple? Right.
Uh, we, I think we only have the one now.
No, we don't have any.
Oh, not any rise on anymore. One thing that I did not put in that.
Did we end up putting leave in there for that person or not?
We did.
And it wasn't enough to keep her?
No, that's a really good point. I, I did. That's a good, that is a really good point, actually. We, I did put, uh, considering changing this policy, uh. We might want to if we consider, you know, this is obviously, this is just a first reading for discussion. But maybe we need to put something in there, uh, like only if the school year begins and we're unable to fill that position as a full-time. This would be a consideration and maybe approved on a case-by-case basis. Or maybe we've posted a position for more than ninety days and don't have viable applicants. Maybe we could try that version. If we felt like we could fill our needs creatively with multiple fractions or part-time positions. Maybe we, we could add. Some type of language to say, this isn't what we do. This is only an option in extreme cases.
Isn't that kind of what we did with that position? We requested it multiple times. So we didn't actually post it as a part-time position. It was kind of just a, we need somebody to fill this slot.
Honestly, the principals were creative in saying, I think we can get it covered if we part it and piece it out this way based on. Uh, folks, uh, what they were willing to commit to us. So we just. Right, kind of pieces together.
The only, I mean, I, I could see, I'm trying to come up with an exception where somebody wouldn't have a flexible schedule. And the only time I could come up with one, if you had somebody doing a job share. Where one of them's working Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday, and one's working Thursday, Friday to put together a full job. And they have to miss Friday and everybody's got their schedule built around that. Man, I could see something like that being, maybe an exception. I've seen that in other places where people will keep their benefits, they'll keep their leave, but they're, uh, I see.
They're together.
Full job share. They're literally a job share. I mean, that's about the only time I can think of where you don't have some flexibility that, to move your schedule around. But tell, I mean, tell me, I mean, maybe, maybe they don't have flexibility. They need to work on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday. I don't know.
Well, right now, the way we do part-time is not necessarily a job share. It's either consistently in the morning or consistently in the afternoon. So that. That setup would be a significant change. And, you know, we do, we all have off Mondays as it is now. So you would think that that would. Accommodate to agree, to a degree, some of the scheduling. Uh, I think this is more, you know, we, we worked through the, the halftime offering and really filling in our positions this fall. What I, in looking at, actually put it in writing, just letting our folks that are going out there and pursuing and interviewing people. Know that that's on the table and it's written right, right here that we can be flexible to that degree. And that regardless of who we have in those positions, we know that that's an option that we have, would be an advantage in putting it in writing. I have no doubt that this group, we always feel comfortable bringing the challenges to, and we, you know, we try and figure out the best course of action moving forward. What this does is it pushes that down and gives them a degree of latitude and space in creating very unique circumstances. This would be the first time I'd ever been in the district that part-time employees were offered anything like.
Or most of your part-time employees.
We really don't have any. It was just filling full-time positions that we needed to create, that be creative and kind of piecing together. This person can do the morning, this person can do the afternoon. Custodial, we have part-time employees. We have two. This is a very limited application, but, because we're not really looking for part-time.
Further discussion for tonight. Fortunately, we're gonna read this a couple more times, so. Think about it for a month. Yeah.
I almost feel like maybe this is too specific and maybe it's just a line or two saying that. You know, halftime employment. Could warrant vacation time on a case-by-case basis or something. I guess. Really not right policy. It's vague.
Yeah.
Okay. Good point.
Most policy, make careful how I say this, but most policy is vague to the degree that it only states what you have to. You know, cause you have to umbrella, you umbrella your processes and procedures with policy. And so you give the people that actually kind of. You know, practice it on a daily basis, some general guidelines or guideposts and bookends with your policy. And typically only get specific when you need to. In hopes that the policy keeps us as consistent as necessary while providing us with the flexibility. To create daily procedures and operations that make it possible to actually get it done. There's always a low, medium and high, like Moasby, when they do their recommendations for board policy, there's always a low, medium and high. Very low restriction, very high restriction and prescriptive. And then there's a moderate version. I think different districts end up on the high part of that or the low part of that. Clearly consistency with, consistently with the exception of some of those more litigious areas. Where they feel like a high degree of specificity isn't the best interest in terms of their nation.
True. One thought, I mean, one thought I'd have is really you're trying to attract certified staff. I mean, that's really who it's meant for more than anything. And it looks to me like, like rolling over leave and all this other stuff, you're trading a headache for yourself. I mean, are you better off just going leave in the year that it was? Accumulated rather than doing carryover. Accumulated rather than doing carryover of the stuff with, I would want to. All the rollover and everything. I mean, I, I might at least make it. Easier for you to manage. Talks about next to can and. I, I, that just seems like a pain that we're into me.
Do you like me to come up with something a little bit more general uh in line with Mark's uh recommendation? And then eliminate the rollover and see if you like the, the look of that better. Gives us a little flexibility, but then.
I won't like it better. I'm gonna vote against that anyway. I mean, like, but like, no, I'm gonna vote against, uh, I'm not for uh giving benefits to our part-time employees. Actually.
Well, that's kind of where I'm at.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna vote again.
This, I mean, I'm saying, this doesn't have to be a first reading. We could choose. Or it's still a first reading, but you could choose to say we're not interested in a second reading either. That's okay. I'm just presenting options that may or may not work with us.
I mean, I think we should have something we either do or we don't, but if we're gonna have something, we should have it in our policy for when. If and when that issue ever arises again.
And we could always bring this back up and discuss changing policy if or when that issue ever arises again.
True.
True.
Hopefully it doesn't happen again, but.
So we have to have three readings, so that's three months of them working that we don't have policy. Just wait till somebody else.
I mean, I think having some kind of caveat to, you know, based on critical need and shortage of staffing. Like Mark had said, you know, the board and school may consider other options or something. I don't know, trying to avoid where we were a couple of months ago, trying to figure out what are we gonna do for her to keep her on?
It didn't work.
No, I know, but, but regardless, I mean, if there is a good. Person out there who is great with our students and everybody loves. I mean, why wouldn't we try to work with them to keep them around? But.
I think it'll cost you more and it'll save you. I mean, I, I really think most part-time people, if they want to do their job. Knowing they're going into a part-time position, they're not gonna say, I'm not gonna take this job unless I get leave.
Yeah, but except for, the only difference in this is you say part-time and I look at it going, they're still expected to be here every day. It's not like we can work around, oh, next week I need off Tuesday, Wednesday, because I gotta go take so-and-so the doctor. They can't, they have to study.
It's just any part-time employees exactly in that position right there. You get an excused absence. It's just like a bunch of time clock. You know, like if I don't go in, it's on my job I have right now. I do not get paid for those hours. That's, that's, that's it.
That would be a duck situation in this case.
Which is typically the nature of part-time work. Yeah.
Let's talk about it next time.
Okay, sounds good. Get ready. If you want to give another staff.
Sure.
We'll see if you like that any better. All right. RFQ for.
I don't know why it's.
It should say facility audit.
Energy audit.
Energy audit.
Yep. So as we discussed uh about putting an RFQ out there, it is in discussion. Uh, if we're going to pursue that, then it would actually be an action item. So I went back and forth of where to, where to put that. But I'd like the, the opportunity to go ahead and uh put an RFQ out there and begin working. With a uh energy savings company. The advantage there is. They will do a complete facility event infrastructure audit for us, which will relieve that guy and his staff big time of doing it. It doesn't cost us anything. They'll charge us, but there's a DNR grant out there that will pay their fee. There's still plenty of money in the, the, that grant for us to apply for that and, and move forward.
No risk to us.
A great way to start a true ten-year long-range plan for me.
Make concerns? Okay, can I have a motion to pursue uh energy audit? Putting out an RFQ or an energy audit?
I will move that we, then RFQ for an energy audit.
And second. All in favor, right hand? All right, motion. Here. Uh, announcements in the Craig meeting will be February twenty first at six thirty. Let's adjourn. Roll call, vote. Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we make a motion.
Oh, you got enough fancy eliminated.
Can I have a motion to go?
I move, we adjourn closed session pursuant to RSMO six ten point zero two one subsections point one three. Relating to individually identifiable personnel records, performance rating records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Point zero three relating to hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting the personnel of a public governmental body with personal merit performance and discussing report and point zero six. Relating to stolen probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, including records of individual test examination scores and point zero one. Relating to legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body or and any confidential and privileged communications between a. Governmental body and its representatives and its attorneys.
Like a long version of me.
I like the one with just the numbers and then acronyms.
Can I have a second? All right, roll call, vote. Mark? Yes, Lori? Naomi?
Yes.
Yes.
Be right.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
I am yes. We are now in closed session. We, I don't think we referred just to that.
No, no, not that. That wasn't.